The next item is the agenda of the next. Will you find a call, second by Chris? Any discussion? I'm just gonna say that as Nicole said, they were very tight. And we're trying to accomplish a few of those.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Yes. That's your name. Hold it, Cameron. I didn't see you.
You're right.
The item is approval of the minutes of August twenty first, two thousand nineteen.
Chair, I had a question during the discussion in regard to the Casey Coombs handbook. In regard to, um... On page one, that is missing. Um, in regard to, um, what we, or what our policy was in regard to victims' rights. And I don't see that that was, um, that's still an open item.
I had a question, um, for the, for the Casey Coombs principle.
Okay.
In regard to wearing the handbook. We address, uh, victims' rights.
Okay.
You have a concern for the August twenty first, two thousand nineteen.
Would you approve the August twenty first, two thousand nineteen minutes? No changes?
Second.
Second by Don. Don, how you doing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm just, it's my first time here. I work in the NYCP program. Should I say it here? Is that all right? Okay. Okay. Yeah, one for everybody here, and this, this is something I have wanted to pass around. So, the NYCP, uh, is a grant we received, um, around our fourth year of a four-year grants. Native youth community projects. Um, and there's four components to it. There's academic, improved academic readiness, improved, um, college, attendance and visitation, and then cultural and life skills. So, um, I know Cameron's come in the past. I worked with Cameron, and so, um, we've kind of decided this year that maybe we'll come every other month. We don't want to bore you too much. Information doesn't change all that much, but then we'll, we'll alternate, so he'll come in November. That's okay with you.
Well, the tribe has a standing agenda item on our attendance.
Oh, okay.
So it needed to be the NYCP.
Okay.
As to progress, that, that's just what you guys have decided.
Okay.
But it's open to...
Anyone that wants.
Anyone that, from the tribe that, in the governance side that want, you know, needs to bring something to our attention. So...
Okay.
Sometimes it was Roxanne, you know, now, then it was Cameron, now it's you.
Okay. Um, so I can just tell you real briefly, um, some of the things we've done this year. This summer, we did a cultural fishing trip. Uh, we did a time management, my management workshops with a native organization called First Nations. And those, that, those numbers of the attendance, we had a basketball tournament. Of course, that was the best attended. We planned this really great canoe trip. Last year, I brought, um, a bunch of kids up to the Pasmacwati tribe, went to their powwow. We made some connections, and then this year, we planned a wilderness canoe trip with them. That kind of fell through at last minute. I think a lot of the kids got scared of being without their phones for five days. So, that was zero. We had twelve that said they were gonna go. And then we had fourteen internships, so part of the program is we, um, and these have been one of the most successful parts of the program is we offer students a fifty-hour internship, and we, we pay them seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, should I be speaking into this?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, okay. And we've had some really great opportunities. We've had, a, a young man did, worked at the fish hatchery, another student worked at Woods Hole. Some have worked with tribal elders in their businesses. They, we had some students, last summer, build, uh, uh, an arbor in a Witu down on the area behind the tribal building. So what we planned for fall, and some of this we've done already, is, uh, last week, the admissions director from Tufts University came and spoke to the students in the Indian Ed Room, uh, on, not, he, he came last year, talked about Tufts. This year, he just talked about the whole application process and financially. We had twenty-six students attend that. Today, uh, UMass Dartmouth representative came from the College Now program. It's a program geared to, uh, first generation, marginalized populations. Uh, they mostly recruit from Boston and Brockton, uh, New Bedford, but, but he came and spoke to our kids. We had nineteen students attend, and it's, it's really a specialized admission process in addition to, they have weekly meetings with counselors and, uh, support tutoring and things like that once they're there. Um, this, next week, we're going out to Wisconsin. We're bringing nine students on a native food summit in Green Bay, Wisconsin. And Monday through Thursday, and then I guess the Packers are playing Thursday night, so we're getting out of there. Uh, University of Minnesota at Morris, they have great opportunities. We, we try to bring kids to s- schools that have, uh, good opportunities for native students, a large native population, as well as financially, they subsidize native students, so that's a trip. We had it originally planned for the end of October. It may get pushed to November now. Some complications have come up. So you'll notice one of the pa- papers being passed around are, are flyers for these different events, and one lists them all. And there's one on their life skills workshop. What we found is a lot of our kids, they don't, um, have even an ID. A lot of kids aren't getting their license now at sixteen and a half. And, um, so we're, we're gonna do a, I went to the RMV, I got all the forms. We're gonna have kids fill out the forms. I'm gonna take a trip to the RMV, get everybody a, an ID, if they don't already have one. Um, that's gonna be in November. And then, also in November, the Eastham Four Hundredth Committee, they're part of the, um, whole four hundred twenty twenty celebration. They're having a youth forum where they're gonna have immigrant youth and, um, local youth and native, they invited some native youth. I'm gonna bring a couple of kids to that forum and just talk about what it's like to be a young person on Cape Cod from their different perspectives. Um, I've been tutoring a couple of our students that, that didn't get their high school graduations, so working on getting them their GED. Starting in October, when progress reports come out, we're gonna start again tutoring. We've done this in the past, Tuesdays and Wednesdays after school in the Indian Ed Room. We'll do tutoring. I'll be doing that. Also, two times this fall, right before, um, the Saturday date of an SAT, we're gonna have a SAT prep session with pizza. Um, we have a, a, a committee that we've been working with Community College, where I also work, with the vice president there, and they've, they've come to the Government Center several times. We're gonna go meet with them on October first, and hopefully we'll come to a date where our youth can go visit the Community College. And they came to the powwow this year, and they had a table to try and recruit students to the Community College. And then also in November, we're gonna do an outdoor skills day on a Saturday with Chiefy. He's gonna take the kids on a woods walk, and then Chinooki's gonna take, show the kids the oyster farm. So just giving them some opportunities to, to learn about career and educational opportunities for them after school. And then the spring, we're planning to do a, a trade school fair at the Government Center. Uh, we've, working with someone in Plymouth, it's o- offered some kind of construction apprenticeship program. We need to look more into that. Uh, two years ago, we went to Haskell, which is a Native American university, um, in Kansas. We're gonna try to go back there again this spring. Um, last spring, by the way, I don't know, Cameron probably told you, went to New Mexico, and all those, there's some great opportunities out in the Midwest and the West for native kids as far as, a lot less expensive. Um, Bowdoin College has an upward bound program for Maine native youth, and they've invited us to come and learn about that program. Our youth wouldn't qualify, but the way Maine, University of Maine is this way too. If you live there for six months, then you be, can become a Maine native, so, you know, that could help students financially. And also LaSalle College in Newton has reached out to us. Um, they want us to come visit in the spring. Um, and then I just, a couple of other, other items there, just appreciating to Mr., Mr. B. for allowing us to, to have Tufts and UMass come um, at the end of the school day. We get better attendance if they miss class rather than after school, and they won't miss sports. So, there were a couple of days there where it was, it was viable for, not all of the students, but some of them were able to, to come. And we're hoping for some assistance, uh, from the teachers this year, maybe when progress reports come out and helping us recruit students and communicate which students really need to come to the tutoring. We've had problems in the past with students not attending, even though their teachers and their parents want them to, and so we have to work on that communication better. And thank you to the superintendent for, um, you know, we're on the, uh, got up to three levels now of Wampanoag classes. That seems to be going well. And also, uh, the last thing that, um, that committee I mentioned, that we, we meet with Brian Brody and Lisa Kett, they've been attending those, and they're helping to work with us on possibly creating some kind of Native American course. We've talked about it. We haven't really put anything definite into yet, place yet for next year, that the college could teach either through dual enrollment or, well, we don't know all the details yet. So that's my agenda. It's a lot there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer for you. Yeah. Yeah.
So, uh, because it's sponsored by NYCP, does that mean it wouldn't be open to the rest of our...
Oh, no, anyone could come. Yep.
So maybe one week you can help me with that too?
Yep. Yeah, that would be, that would be great. Uh, and, and, and as far as spreading the word among the Mashpee school community too, you know, because that's our biggest problem, is communicating with the community, so...
Well, I'm sure we could make, you know, some of us can make arrangements certain too.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think it would serve a lot of our students. We've done a couple of college fairs, and, um, I think this is reaching the population we haven't maybe reached yet. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Um, so if you look at the back of it, if it's around there somewhere, it has kind of the descriptions. But, um, it's, uh, it's in Green Bay, it's tribes from all around the country, and they come, uh, together and share their ideas of how they're trying to become more self-sustaining uh, on their land through agriculture, rather than maybe depending on casinos or other things like that. And I know I'm signed up for the Apple Orchard Workshop, so I know there's beekeeping. It's several days of lots of things. Yeah, if, if you Google it online, you probably see the whole genus. I know, I just need... Just need someone to donate fifty acres of land. Yeah. All right. Thank you for taking the time to listen, and hopefully we'll see a lot more this year. Okay.
Hi. Good evening. So, for our first month, for our first couple of weeks, we're welcoming back into the school year, so students are settling in with their new classes and new schedules, and the time change, and new lunches, and social dynamics, all of that. We had the Lieutenant Governor Karen Pulido at Mashpee Middle High School to engage with students in hands-on learning opportunities in different areas of our makerspace, and seeing the fantastic equipment that we have at our school, and so that was a really amazing opportunity for her to come down and to see that, and for her to support us in that way. And going along with that, we had a robotics competition around the same time at Four Seas, and we had students share their experiences, like Sam Rosum, talking about how she got into STEM and what the Mashpee Robotics Program means to her. So that's a cool video on Twitter to check out. High school had their class elections done this past week, and with students voted from a ballot in the homeroom period. Our fall sports for varsity, junior varsity, and middle school are all in full swing with games and practices, some of which have impressive records already. And we have some great individual Mashpee standouts representing the athletic team culture that we work hard to create at the middle high school, as well as the teamwork that flourishes because of it. The National Art Honor Society decorated tiles for the Southport Falcons with images of family and beautiful New England landscapes. And the last main thing I want to talk about was the nine eleven tribute service in Boston that I got to do once again this year with Project Three Fifty-One, where we made care packages, so some of them went to troops overseas, some went to Sol- to the soldier's home in Chelsea, Mass, and the New England Center and Home for Veterans in Boston. And so the station that I was at for service was card making, and those were collected by hundreds of people that went through the tent line collecting donations that ambassadors and alumni collected over the summer in their service. And in Mashpee, Katrina Mayan and I had boxes at the Mashpee Senior Center and the Mashpee Public Library, and we made cards with some of the campers at the Mashpee Recreational Camp at Washington School. And so we are very excited for the school year to come, so thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
So next item on the agenda is report to the superintendent.
So first, updating personnel update. Julie and Terry, we finally have our part-time computer technician. He is a Mashpee grad from a couple of years back. So he's a, he's, uh, knowledgeable and enthusiastic. At Coombs School, Michelle Byrd, Shaver Walker were both hired as repair professionals, and we have a long-term, sort of long-term, school adjustment council in effect until we hire for that position. And food service workers, Leah Silva and Tricia Jallary. Washington School, Melissa Norton is a new food service worker. And at the high school, Rhonda Sharp is an English teacher. Megan Tomorrow is our innovative pathway mentor, and Michael Pat is a repair professional. And we are still looking for a school nurse at Washington. Our current nurse is leaving the end of this month, and school adjustment counselor. Share on the start of school. In your folder, you can, you have this sheet that looks like this. We started the school year on August twenty-seventh with just our staff on Tuesday morning, and many people participated in the gratitude greetings. We had about ten families show up, the boys soccer team, Mark Florence from the Polar Kids, so it was a great way to welcome our, um, our staff when they returned, and hopefully that will be an annual tradition that will continue to build. At convocation, thank yous go to Jessica Rua, eleventh grader at Mashpee Middle High School, for leading the pledge of allegiance and singing the national anthem. Also, thank you to eleventh graders Elise Edmonds and Chapel Fancher for a very beautiful interpretive dance that they did for our staff. And then thank you to the MMHS Jazz Band with Mr. Torianos and Mr. Peters, and it included not only current enrolled students, but recent graduates as well, so that was a very nice performance. Thank you to speakers at convocation. Chairman Gorman spoke. Jessie Little Do Baird from the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe also spoke. Mary Stickley, the president of the Mashpee Teachers Association. Consuelo Carroll, our, uh, Mashpee outreach coordinator. Where the adults spoke, then we had, a couple of these are adults too. Celia Crefter shared, um, some inspiring words. She is a member of the class of two thousand eighteen and in her sophomore year at Columbia University. Haley McCarthy spoke. She's the class of twenty twenty. Clara Sunning, class of twenty twenty-one. And Eric Menke, the class of twenty twenty-two. And then also Skyla spoke as another member of the class of twenty twenty-two, and also a group community representative. The overall theme that came through from the students' words was to see the whole person, not just the student, in front of them, to build relationships, be inquisitive, think about things from a fresh perspective. In the afternoon on that day, the elementary staff participated in Wonders Training. And then on Thursday, then there was the day in between. Thursday, August twenty-ninth, we had Dr. Mark Brackett, who provided a, a whole staff, um, talk about emotional wellbeing. He has a new book, Permission to Feel, and he is the author of The Ruler Approach, and comes out of Yale University's Bachelor of Social Emotional Learning, and he's very, um, he's just a very captivating speaker, and his own journey, uh, tells you a lot about why he does what he does today. And so that was from the morning, and we're looking forward to, um, rolling out our work with Dr. Brackett, based on a grant and, um, other things for next year. Uh, the staff had a great, beautiful, delicious lunch provided by Gus Stickley and his team, and then they had afternoon work time, and then secret peak was from two to three. And the actual start of the school year was beautiful weather, which was very great before. And then on the page that you have, there's some information about current enrollment, what the tardies and absences look like this year compared to last year. Uh, we are down, as of today, twenty-nine students from what we were October one of last year, according to Desi. The drops are at the Coombs and the Washington School, and you'll see that the middle high school is up.
You're talking about attendance?
Well, the chart at the top is attendance, but then number of students, that bullet below the chart.
So this is our, our population.
Actual population. So interesting, comparing this school year, the first week, to last school year, the first week, our tardies were drastically lower, and our absences were, um, improved. That's just a fact. Figuring, there's another, another question. Uh, other notes about the start of the school year. All three principals report that parent drop-offs in the morning are about half of what they were last year. I observed the morning buses at the high school, uh, with Mrs. Liko one morning, and all are very well populated, and neither shift was up from last year, because I've seen the buses from last year. Um, reporting out Kathy Boyko, that the school year has been very smooth in terms of bus transportation, and she has many years to, um, compare to. She has had fewer bus stop and route issues than in past years, with still a couple to resolve at the end of this week. The timing of the routes is working well. All the buses are arriving at school on time. Picking up students in the morning from the Boys and Girls Club has worked well, and we anticipate making minor route adjustments for safety and efficiency. And as in past years, traffic congestion at the lights at Route one fifty-one in Old Foxville Road continues to be problematic during the MMH arrival and dismissal windows. And I have heard from a few parents who are experiencing challenges with the new school's start times, as well as parents who are happy with the new start times. So that's just a sort of a snapshot.
So, uh, if there are half as many drop-offs, does that mean our buses are twice as full?
Our buses, they always had plenty of...
Yeah, so they're...
But now they're more appropriately filled. More so we're taking the bus right.
Okay.
And you get it this moment? Yeah.
Uh, but, but we have, we don't have space problems.
No, no.
So we're not even... Great.
We're just... Any questions on that?
So, that, and then the, the tardies from the high school, the first week of school last year, since the people at home don't have them, get this sheet in front of them.
Right.
Were almost eleven percent of the week of school, and that's down to three percent this year. And then absences, the first week last year at the high school were eleven percent, and this year are one percent.
Sure.
Great.
Okay, update on proposed used school funds. You do have that chart, I think. You know, it's, just the update on that. Is the audio system for this space, the amplification system, has been ordered. It's sixty-seven hundred, and I ha- we have it in the headset. It will have multiple, um, I guess you call it boards, but, you know, many people are using, so if someone's in the audience, they could put one on as well, and it all feeds off of that one. And then the only other update is on the water bottle, bottle fillers, which I did walk this building with, um, Mr. Tripp, and the cost for this school and Coombs is much less. It's in the one hundred to maybe four hundred range per current fountain. I wasn't looking for new fountains, they're just retrofitting. The high schools are more in the two thousand range because they're a bigger unit that they would leave one, sort of the handicapped water fountain, and the other one. Merged into a... But within, we did this last week, so he said, give him two weeks. And, um, and Mr. Rooney is also pricing out the amplifying systems for as many fountains as we can, where the middle high school. And we're looking forward to, um, those other things, but I don't have any information I would share right now. Any questions? This was approved on age twenty-one? Okay, next is acknowledgements, so I just want to share. So, I would like to acknowledge the Chamber of Commerce. They dropped off gift bags for our new staff members with, um, different items. So that was a nice treat. I want to thank the Kiwanis. They also dropped off backpacks filled with school supplies, which have been distributed to all three schools. All of them to the Kiwanis. They have donated fifteen hundred dollars to the Washington Schools supplemental food program.
Well, that was specifically into the Cape Kidneal.
Cape Kidneal, so it's a hundred and fifty dollars a year to support a child, to make sure they have food that goes home on the weekend and on school vacations. So they have chosen to support ten students, ten children. The Mass Hire. Cape and, Cape and Islands Workforce Board also brought two huge bags of brand-new school supplies, um, that have been distributed as well. And then the one oh second intelligence wing brought, dropped off backpacks that were filled with school supplies as well. So that's very nice. And then, I don't know if you brought your pictures, Mary Kate, did you bring?
I did.
You did?
Did those go to school or did they put me in strictly the students?
No, they, oh, I, that came loose like that. They're not gonna move it. They were really teachers. There was just a wide...
So into the classroom.
Oh, yeah, into the classroom.
Backpacks.
Stop. Right. So, you probably saw the, you used one on nine, uh, for nine eleven. But the Washington School formed, um, one says Mashpee Police Department, one says Mashpee Fire Department. And then Principal O'Brien, with some students, had, she had them made very large, and took them and delivered them on nine eleven to the, um, respective stations. And I know that the Coombs School also wrote notes to the fire department and delivered them.
The bagels.
What? And they... Bagels. But tied to this, with the large signs that were taken to the Mashpee Police, the Mashpee Fire, which was out there on social media, prompted John Miller, from, who was a, um, he owns the Miller picture thing in town. He reached out to both the Mashpee Fire and the Mashpee Police, and he brought the, to bring, for down the large pictures that were in the case. Nice. Very happy that he brought them to do the work for us as well, and he often has many leftover supplies for the other teachers. Acknowledgements, and then you have my goals. It's a very generous community in Mashpee, and beyond on the Cape as well, but amazing to tell.
Mine is one come out of nine eleven.
Yeah.
So the buildings, this new thing we're doing this year, they each chose how they wanted to support first responders as part of National Day of Honor. Um, so that's something we'll do every year. That really came from Skyla, and then Project Three Fifty-One initiative. So, that's...
So that's how we, um, Mashpee, and the high school also, um, I, um, think that they did. Maybe not.
Oh, yes. Shane Kidman was the photographer.
Was that a grown?
No, he actually looked way up.
So I'm sorry to interrupt, but that is something we're doing every year.
You want to get a.
There's a block.
No.
Are you going to follow the.
Do you want to watch? Do you want to see the poster?
No, 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 I'll, I'll.
Follow us.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so next is my R, my goals. You did receive them, I think electronically ahead of, um, tonight, and then you have them here as well. So just for everyone out there. My first goal, professional practice goal, is to present the multi-year Mashpee Public Schools strategic plan to the school committee by June of twenty twenty. Second professional practice goal, which actually is merged into student learning as well as the district improvement goal, is to participate in at least eight walk, classroom walks per month during this school year, and provide feedback to school principals and teachers on their integration of M T S S framework and protocols. A third goal is a student learning goal, is around student attendance. And using the two thousand nineteen Mashpee chronic absenteeism data as reported by Desi, as a baseline, the percentage of Mashpee Middle High School and Quaschent School students in each subgroup who are chronically absent will be reduced to ten percent by twenty twenty-one, this is the two-year goal. And, um, chronic absenteeism means that you are absent eighteen days out of a hundred and eighty days. All of these goals will, are collaborative with others involved with our district. I also have a district improvement goal, my fourth goal is to implement our portrait of a graduate. There are several steps involved with bringing it from where it is currently to where we see it, some of it may actually take a little beyond one year, but we will make pretty strong progress with it this year. And implementation means that everybody understands it, it's visible, and it's being integrated and, um, in lessons, so that we can track the students' progress through all of their day life. Uh, fifth goal I have for district improvement is by June of twenty twenty, I will identify areas within the school district where culture, diversity, equity, and inclusion may be improved. I will collaborate in the development and maintenance of district-wide practices and procedures that promote equal access and opportunities for all students with an emphasis on engagement, high expectations, and shared responsibility. And this will also involve not just myself within the district, but there. This will be the year that we get all the, the baseline data of all of the areas that need to be, um, need attention and focus on making sure that every student has equal access. There are many, many areas we have already started to brainstorm, we're looking at. And also there are just, um, some really good information about if you're looking at diversity, equity, and inclusion. So that will help guide our work as well. And we still have one year left on our current blueprint for progress, so with each of those goals, you might notice that I did tie it to the superintendent's rubric. And I also tie it to a, um, indicator on the superintendent's rubric, and also to the blueprint for progress.
What was the, uh, current, or last year's absenteeism rate for the middle high school and Quaschent?
Well, it's just come out on Desi, so it's really still embargoed.
Till Tuesday.
So general statement about it is that from the prior year, there was some good improvement.
Um, I, when I reviewed this earlier, I just, I was pleased to see that, um, the district improvement goal, the, the book goes on actually influencing inclusion, and I thought there might be some good, um, that's how it worked with the leadership team of the tribe. More figuring in, um, with them throughout the year, so I, I was just happy to see that that was focused, so thank you. Yeah, let's really, you get all this done. Let us know what we can do about.
I would imagine you're. The only other thing I had under my report was the, um, email that I passed out to you, which had to do with Soltech energy. And, um, I don't know whether it's going, going before the board's election, I feel like it's rather soon. Kath, Kathy definitely wants to make sure that the school community is aware of that. I had, I had asked her about sort of the solar canopy parking lots.
Yeah.
If they think Quaschent would be a great, but they said, no, that wasn't, wasn't viable. Maybe cost wise, I don't know.
Yes, that's even with incentives, the town would be paying more for the electricity generated. So the parking cabins were not viable in any of the school parking lots.
No, it was, it wasn't part of the, um, my report, but I wanted to see the final, um, form that we developed, so this is for the teacher mini-grants. The school committee had, that aside, twenty-five thousand dollars from school of choice to award, um, sort of recognize in what teachers have, so now there is a pro, a form and a process in place. The window will be October first through, November fifteenth? October first through November fifteenth for teachers to complete one of the positions. And then we will notify them by January first, um, if they achieve that. We talked about putting a cap on it, but I think what we ended up deciding was we would wait to see what the interest was. And if everybody's request come in within the twenty-five thousand, good. If not, we could do a percentage or have conversations with all the people involved.
How are you going to let them know about the upcoming, do they already know, or?
Well, they know a little bit, I think, the, the leads here. And, uh, did you mention a conversation? But they will get an email and a form will be attached, and the principals can talk about it, the staff can use it as well.
It's all, all teachers, all schools? And parents, they may submit something on their own, and they.
They can, I think we've worded it as educator.
Educator. Just for one question, um, so groups of educators could submit a single request, correct?
I, I could imagine that might fit more, if it were more of an event, if they wanted to take children on, that would be sort of a team. So are you saying like that's, it's not a different?
Well, I, i- if that is true, then I would put parentheses, S, after the name. So if there's multiple participants that are doing the request, just to make it clear. Because I do think particularly events, that that might be, uh, s- something that they might want to do at a grade level. That's, that's my two cents, man.
Is it for the business manager, Mr. Fox?
Yes, okay, um, you have before you budget actual for nine twelve, uh, two thousand nineteen, again, it's just opening up. We're kind of tweaking the, uh, projections going out as far as salaries. Um, go, and, um, everything looks fine. Uh, at the beginning of the year, Dr. Curry informed me that we give out an out-of-district placement, two hundred and fifty thousand, but they're not coming till January, so after that, so I was happy, um, one point five. But we will, we can cover that within our, within our sped budget, we have worked that out, so, um, you know, beginning of the game is what a coach is saying, so you can make a judgment. So, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
I know, I know. Later, you know, that, that we're notified at the start of school year that students coming in at the cost of that tour, I think sometimes we don't have, like, recent examples, or, no, I mean, when we're talking to the town about why we need to pay money in our coffers for things like that, so. Thanks for sharing. I didn't have any other questions.
We just had like one payroll, the second payroll is coming up, I saw the second payroll. Tweaking our projections on the payroll side, but they look good. Any questions? Okay, great, moving right along. Um, next one is the school choice revenue and expenses. Um, we started off with one million, um, seven thousand, two sixty-five, and I think I went over this at the last meeting. Uh, we talked about proposed use of cho- choice funds that were, um, unspent, and I, I like the, um, the way, uh, school committee meeting members always state up to a certain amount on the expenditures of student choice, rather than if we can do it within the budget, we'll do it within the budget. So right now we have a total, um, proposed total of two hundred and seven thousand dollars in items. Look down at the bottom, you'll notice that even with the five hundred and thirty-eight, we, we received two payments, the five hundred and thirty-eight, and less off war, which was the two hundred and fifty thousand, we still have a hundred and fourteen thousand left to expand. And that include, I have taken out the two hundred and seven that have been asked by the, um, school committee. Any questions on that?
It's a process, so not, given that balance, do we entertain ideas for choice funds to spend first throughout the year, or can we do that for going August, it's not like once a year.
Oh, you know, it's revolting.
Yes, we can give you discussions at any time, anytime. Absolutely.
And somewhat related to school choice, uh, September tenth, we have a hundred and sixteen student choice.
It's above the assumption that, uh, that we had named, we kind of, we kind of keep it around a hundred. So if you're at a hundred and sixteen, remember I talked about that figure at the last meeting, that at the end of the year, the, the students that leave and, uh, come, you know, if you get more than a hundred and sixty, or we could have some taken away. And that's the reflection, fifty-five, five, twenty-six, but we, we had some students that left, so we, I don't want to call it penalized, it's just a proportion.
Yeah, but, so last year, that number was basically the same, we were taking in about a hundred, and we were closing about a hundred. So we're coming up a hundred and sixteen are coming in, and we're sure we know how many are going out.
My unofficial, so it could be, I have a few errors in me, but I have it as those that are choicing out are ninety-eight.
Is that just choices?
No, just. Yeah, October one is always the official of everything, so this was just looking at last year's, taking out the seniors who were choice that left. And then the other.
Oh, so can we get like?
It won't probably.
The October one, that's what we call it, the October one data, but it's not ready until, um, it's usually October.
What?
Winter.
Yeah, I, I don't really get it. It doesn't take a while, so November.
Okay, moving right along, um, involving in private the funded grants, um, you have any questions on those? No, they're, they're, they're being spent down. And they will. Yeah, I know, I know, I know. There are no questions on that, moving right along to the Mashpee Public Schools food service. We have before you, uh, recommendations, uh, in, um, salary increases for the co-caltons and the lead cooks. Total impact on the school, uh, lunch, uh, school food service budget, we take that along.
Can we clarify this with, uh, the, the, the director?
And, right, and I think we brought it up in the subcommittee also, it's to meet the minimum wage standards.
That's what I was asking. So this, what this, this will, what is, uh, right as they come in, as they start to get.
Well, each year, you know, we're going to have to increase. You can see they're not big wages, so it's very difficult to get people, and you can see superintendent's report that we're three. The food service people. Any questions? I need a load on that.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, so actually entertain a motion to approve, uh, food, uh, food service.
Are these effective retroactive?
Yes, they are.
To July first?
Yes.
Right, but we really start, only a few people.
No, they, they, no, no one worked in July. They're all.
They're all starting.
Yes, they, we all started, all of them contracted July.
Right, so I'm, make a motion that we approve the increase in the food service, um, salary rates, um, effective July first, two thousand and nineteen.
By Don, second, by Chris, need further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
That ends my report, Mr. Chairman. Oh, that's just, I, I, we've all received the F Y twenty-one budget, they're just, uh, for our kind of look at, um, we'll probably be making changes, I mean, getting, getting a budget to you this early, I don't want to get into that, get into it every year. I already, I already have changes coming through, and I'll discuss those at next.
As you can see by the time, a lot of this is ten minutes.
I, I, I'd like you to get into it a little bit, you know, we'll have some real good. But it's everybody on board, you know, just the way I done the budget.
I add the town manager's budget calendar was distributed, so October fourth will be when this version of the budget is input into UNIS. And the school budget adopted by school committees due to the town manager, according to his chart, was January eighteen, but we talked to him because you're not voting on it till the twenty-second, so it is due to the town manager on the twenty-third. And I don't know when we go, I don't see that on the list, as to the department meetings, we've got to present specifically to the town manager.
I'm usually going to name.
Right, it's not on this chart.
And if we don't. We have a very distinct timeline, which we require to never. All right, so I'll, I'll do this quick, this, uh, this is basically my next, my favorite part of the night. And I had a request from, um, Don to provide a handout.
Everybody else can go off and get your coffee.
Yeah, exactly. This is only, this is only fourteen pages, so.
Good time for backwards, right?
Thank you.
We got the. You ready, want one of these?
You need one, Kathy?
I need one for Kathy.
I don't know if I have enough, if I do, I'll give you one.
That's all right, I can have your coffee.
So we're just going to talk about postponement and table? So we're just gonna talk about postponement and table? There's a lot more information. Sorry. Sorry, I don't have it memorized. So, really, I, initially, I was just gonna talk about table and postpone, because postponement definitely is a, is a, you know, a, a word, a motion that's very highly misunderstood. And as I was thinking about it, I was probably doing postpone definitely, and you also postpone a certain time, and you should also be table and reverse on it. So we're not gonna go through this whole thing, this is actually pure reference. But the first thing is, what kind of motions, lay on the table, take from the table, postpone, postpone definitely, postpone definitely, are all called subsidiary motions. And what that means is, they are motions that allow you to do things to a main motion. So if you have a motion on the floor, a main motion, we're in the middle of discussing it, you use a subsidiary motion to change what we're gonna do with that motion. So, for example, lay on the table, take from the table, postpone. Um, so things I wanted to just put about laying on the table, or table on the motion, the real reason that tables, the most common reason that tables use is actually, for example, that we have John here talking, speaking. And maybe he had a very specific time, he's only available for the fifteen minutes during the, during the night, I think that's it. As we go through the agenda, and we get to the agenda, a point that's gonna affect him to speak for that time, we can table that, that, that motion, or that, that agenda or motion, whatever's on the floor, it's what we're talking about, is table the motion. John comes up to this fifteen minutes, and then we can take it back. Um, there's some things in here about taking on the table, when you can't use it, um, if it's part of like the rules, or sorry, records of the committee, the motions, uh, record of the committee, and we're out of that section of the agenda, now you can't take from it. One, there's a lot of weird things there, so table's much more confusing than postpone. So, one of the things about laying on the table, you can't interrupt the speaker who has the floor with, uh, table. It must be seconded, it is not debatable. Um, so that means you just do the motion for tabling and vote, and that discussion. It's not amendable, it requires majority vote, it cannot be reconsidered without. It does, reconsideration is permitted if, if the lay on the table fails, as long as no material debate has progressed on the motion or motions which it would apply. What that means is, if you have a main motion on the floor and someone tabled it and failed, as long as the discussion hasn't continued for the main motion, someone else can reconsider the vote, that has, that has, uh, that approved, that, um, voted yes to the matter.
So, let me just verify, so when you're talking about tabling a motion, you have to, so in that situation, so I could say, I'm gonna table this discussion so that John can, can choose this conversation, and then we have to vote on that?
Exactly.
Okay, and then that's why you're saying it's not tabled or amendable?
Exactly, if it, tabling is tabling, um, you can have some discussion about timing, you know, if you need to discuss, you know, let me table it fifteen minutes, and so we take it down to twenty minutes, I mean, that's, that's all, that's all, that can't, yeah. But taking from the table, I'm not gonna go through, um, all of this thing on here, you can read it, but taking from the table is the actual, um, official way to remove, take something off, or take. I know, it's lay on the table and take, take it from the table. And again, there's a lot of little, um, idiocy procedure about taking from the table, uh, how to make the motion, when you cannot use it, et cetera. But that's all in here for you guys to have fun. I understand when you can't take from the table, when you voted to suspend rules to allow induction of another main motion, so, so you basically moved on to another motion. Now that you've moved on to another motion, you cannot take the previous motion from the table, does everybody understand that it's the main motion that's on the table? So, if we move on to another motion, you can no longer take that initial motion from the table, uh, until you get to like. When a motion has been laid on the table, expressly to allow consideration of another motion, same, it's the same thing, I move to another motion, so you can't take it from the table. When a group has rescinded a previous motion to allow a conflicting motion to be made, reconsider the game, move it to another motion, and I'm gonna move on to the next. All right, so taking from the table, you can't interrupt the speaker who has the floor, it must be seconded, it is not debatable, or it can't be amended, it requires a majority vote, and it cannot be reconsidered, table fails. So that's table, so, that's why I think we mostly use postpone here, because tabling has a lot of, uh, a lot of. So postpone, so there's three definite, three different times to postpone, there's postpone to a certain time, there's postpone definitely, and there's postpone indefinitely. And it's pretty simple. Um, I think, um, so postponing to a certain time is exactly what it says, you postpone a motion or a agenda topic to a certain time, you vote it on, you move on. If you use postpone definitely as the motion, I'm sorry, as the subsidiary motion, you can't move consideration beyond the next regular meeting. You can postpone to a later meeting session, if you have another meeting tonight, after the, the, for school committees, we don't wanna do that. The six characteristics of postponing to a certain time, you can't interrupt, must be seconded, it is debatable, but the debate needs to be the pros and cons of the postponement, and cannot talk about the main motion on the floor. Can be amended specifically at times, requires majority vote, and it can be reconsidered if adopted. We haven't talked about reconsideration before. Then the last one's my favorite, it's postpone indefinitely, this is used wrong all the time, postponing indefinitely kills a motion. There's no such thing as postponing indefinitely, then the next meeting, bring it back down. So, the key characteristics, can't interrupt the speaker or the floor, it must be seconded. It is debatable, again, the, the debate is on the pros and cons of postponing, not the pros and cons of motion, it cannot be amended, requires majority vote, and it can be reconsidered if adopted. And this, if the motion laid on the table isn't taken from the table by the next regular meeting, the motion dies. Does a lot of information, that's why I wanted to give you a handout for the, for the, uh, issue that, you know, that includes my training. Brought to you by Skittles. Um, next item on the agenda is before of subcommittees. And we had several subcommittees, we, we had the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. In policy, um, not much to do up for the, like, superintendent evaluation subcommittee, Patty provided the goals. I don't think we, we talked about it, and we, we compared her goals. We really talked about the way that we did business last year for the superintendent evaluation this year, she's not required to, uh, focus on every single indicator in her group. So, she gets to pick the indicators she wants to focus on based on what she thinks is important for the district, and how it is caged by super, school committee's goals. Uh, and we're really gonna take that into consideration when we do the evaluation, uh, the summit evaluation, and the fact that we don't need to go through the entire group. And we're also talking about, when we do the evaluation itself, the actual physical evaluation we do. That we're, we're kind of under, trying to figure out the ins and outs of that, so that we can tailor the evaluation to only, um, provide you with needs to evaluate her on the indicators of what she has, at which we have decided is, are the important, although there'll still be ones available, there are indicators that she's, we're already gonna know, outreach is a good example. We all have a very good understanding of Patty, where we, how we, how we're providing this firm, uh, evidence, so we can sort of, uh, does that make sense? But there's more, there's more to that, too, with the ones that we did not remove. Um, the K-Cop Collaborative, uh, we, we thought that the K-Cop Collaborative, uh, needs, um, representation, I believe it's felt with the collaborative charter, um, there's school committee ways of as well. Planning Construction is part of the Mashpee Charter, we, uh, the school committee, uh, committee member required. Sick Bank is required by the current contract. Wampanoah Tribe Liaison, we thought that that was important because the outreach we're doing, plus it also would allow us to continue our relationship and the integration part of the, um, requirement. Uh, Town Finance Committee with their advocacy for, uh, the budget, that didn't seem like a smart thing to do, but a sandwich board of select legislative representatives. Uh, the other one, two, three, four, five, um, liaisons that were removed, we couldn't find any, um, any, um, standing guidance of that we were required by law or by, uh, our own regulations that we need to be part of liaisons. So we thought that it would be an ad hoc membership, where the boosters, health advisory, Indian Ed, CPAC, or Mashpee Substance Use Task Force needed, promoted us to be part of a decision or discussion that we'd be more than happy to support, just to reach out to us.
So I thought on health advisory, that we were part of that group, because when I was on that committee a while back, the school committee member chaired that committee.
And, well, we discussed the health advisor, there is nothing in our policies that discuss health advisory committee, um, if we need to, so that would mean that if we're chairing that committee, that we have, um, I guess, oversight of that committee? So, we, no one can ask the question of how that committee started. Um, right now, the way it's set up, it, it had a direct line between the committee to the school committee vice going through the leadership. And Patty's recommendation was that there's still gonna be a health advisory committee, but it's gonna be, um, more of a, um, smaller focused group, but the, Nurse Daisy has the, the ones her.
So she's the, she's been recording.
Yeah, sort of.
Right.
Tradition, so it makes sense that she would, sort of, take over all of that. We were also looking at these shifts, being more sort of, try not to look at the current people on the board.
Yeah.
Because some of them are specifically interested, so they may not be future persons, so, yeah, like boosters would be, you know, school, maybe, um, living in a home, like the school, that's private.
Right.
But, um, you know, Indian Ed, I, I attend all those, we have the director of specialized CPAC, and the Mashpee Substance Use Task Force also has Daisy, Hope and I are on, if there's a required membership of the school committee member, it happens to be in the interest of one now.
Okay.
But I think we sort of have a coverage of it in terms of school representation or district representation.
All right.
And again, none of this means that the people that are interested in private citizens can go in, 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 in thing they want, this is just to prevent them from mandated, uh, uh, membership. Less of the, 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 the.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys doing this work, because I, I, I didn't realize, I mean, I think that's a subs, those are substantive helpful changes, because every year we'll move down the renewals and reassignments, it's really a lot. And, um, you know, I think when you have people coming onto this board, you want them to maximize the time and focus it, and, you know, to the extent that those individuals wanna grow their involvement or something, they always have that opportunity. I think keeping this a little tighter, this, this, as, as the newest, they're having a lot, I think, um, I can see a lot about it, so thank you.
Good points.
Um, I'm, do I have to move to a purpose?
You don't, there's already been a motion in the second. You thought it was a two percent working group?
Oh, okay.
So if there's, uh, any discuss, any further discussion, you can move to vote.
I wanna land on the.
Wait for George.
Wait for a second, okay, motion back. All right, how do you vote on?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, unanimous, the chances to be, um, what do you call this? School committee liaison committee decides.
Can please ask, do you make a motion?
I'm sorry, it was, it would be my, uh, I, I would make, I made a motion at George's side.
Oh, okay, oh, you.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, the next item on the agenda that we have specifically assigned unfinished, because we have this nineteen twenties school committee meeting day complex, um, I would like to entertain a motion to postpone this until the next meeting, as George is not here and has a concern.
So, I might only, then, I will.
I mean, if you, if, you don't have a second, then.
Uh, so, if George is along with the complex, why is he here to discuss these other options? Has he approved the other options?
He's the one who brought this up as a concern, I wanted him here to be able to explain why they're concerned, in case everyone thinks that they stay the same. Complex with, with.
Well, as the person who attended those meetings for two years, sometimes that happens. And my priority is always to be at our Mashpee School Committee. And, so, I, I'm, I can make a couple of these other dates, but I'm, I'm, I can't guarantee that I will be able to make the new dates.
So, this, this is kind of my thought, right, as long as we have a floor, we want, we hope to have everybody here at a meeting, but every time we shift the date, now there's a chance that somebody else is interested in making it, but I think.
Right.
As long as we members can say, I can pretty much guarantee I'll be here in a long emergency, I'm, I'm gonna be there on the side of this, now moving on.
Uh, I, I tend to agree, because I like it to be consistent, and when we now, it's the second, now it's the third, when it, it shifts, it causes much more ripple problems, not only for us, but, you know, for, um, other people trying to attend the meetings. So, I would, my preference would be leave them the way they are, as long as we have a quorum.
Three people speak up and say, I can't make it.
Yeah, I think, uh, that was my thought, was just, as we get, you know, if those, I, I, I'm sensitive to the fact that these are, gee, these are known complexes. Um, and, you know, it, so, if we want, uh, it's just, the one in April, I'm not sure I can make, I, I think I could make the May one. Um, the June one, if that ends up, if we end up being out of school already, then that may be a problem for me, um, so pushing it to potentially the last day of school, or, um, that might not be a good idea. So, those are my, so I don't care if we vote on it tonight, but I just wanted to get my feedback in, instead of me postponing.
Well, then, we, we have several options here, we can postpone it, that I can, if you postpone definitely, we can postpone it indefinitely. All right, you can make a motion and disapprove.
You just have a question.
This is the crazy part, so.
We'll make a motion that we postpone indefinitely.
Motion from Don, or a second? Second from Chris, postpone the school committee meeting day complex indefinitely, any discussion?
I have one thing to say to that.
Sure.
So I just noticed that, well, I'll just say, as the person who attended these collaborative meetings, um, for several years, that they start at five. So now that our meetings are at five thirty, um, it didn't allow, it didn't allow me to do, want, to do vote. So I used to go, they used to stack the agenda, uh, so that we would have votes early on in the meeting, and so that when I had to leave at five forty-five, five thirty to get here, um, they wouldn't lose their quorum. The only problem with these that I see, that, and that we might wanna move one, perhaps the May date, is because they're consecutive, so if George misses, I think, two collaborative meetings in a row, um, they sort of take away his voting privileges, and then they have to be reinstated. It's just a process so they can maintain their quorum, so they basically kick people off the board that aren't at the meetings, so that if they're. Yeah, I'm just saying that, just the fact that those are three in a row, it might affect us, so, anyway.
I mean, we could always consider a singular one.
Right.
At a later date.
Yeah, which would not be the same motion.
It would not.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we can wait till we get a closer, that, that all of our calendars.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds good.
Plus, I understood this. Kills the motion for the time being, the motion can't be brought up again at the same meeting, it could be brought up to the subsequent meeting, if I read correctly.
You do read correctly.
Okay. This is, which is different than town meeting, town meeting kills it for three years, but.
How many?
Three.
Yeah, okay, so the motion on the table is postponed indefinitely.
It is.
Now you worry me when you say it's on the table.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Man, yes.
Will we agree not to a definitely?
No, I think we're just waiting for it. So thank the president. All right, now moving to new business, so we have the revised FY twenty and twenty-one school calendars in the pack at page thirty-two.
So the only changes are related to voting in schools. So on the nineteen twenty calendar, if you look at the month of March, you see that we have a professional day on March third of two thousand and twenty, which is a state primary, a national primary day. Our original calendar has us having a PD day on the twentieth of March. So for that calendar, we are proposing to move our PD day from March twentieth to March third, twenty-fourth.
So it doesn't say professional development on the calendar, it just says presidential primary.
Oh, yeah, that's cool.
So the presidential election, there will be PD, that will just be. No school.
Are you looking at the next year's?
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Sorry.
So we get a motion to approve the two thousand nineteen to two thousand and twenty updated calendar edits. So we're adding staff to the.
Second.
Motion by Nicole, second by Don to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty nine professional schools calendar with edits. Any discussion? Hearing none, Don, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
So for the FY twenty-one calendar, you're going to look at the month of November. And we have made it a no school day on the number third, which is the official election. And yet that day has been added in June, like the last day is the twenty-first, as it happens.
Originally it was what, fifteen?
Yes. I mean, the twenty-fifth. No, June.
June, it was originally the last day of school.
Well, yes, the twenty-fifth, which you count the five.
Yeah.
And I guess the, the PD day scheduled on October ninth could not be moved?
No.
How do we end up two days later next year?
Same thing, but I think it's the way that Christmas, like the way that holidays fell. It's the same thing today while I was looking at this. And you're also looking at the kids. Let's see, staff is coming back on the thirty-first of August and the first.
Right.
And so the kids are actually starting on the second. And if they give you look at the previous year's calendar, or this year, for example, they came back on the third.
Right, so they came back one day later.
Right, so they're still coming back before Labor Day, but.
But they're getting out later.
Right, because, but you're looking at the actual days in September. Yeah, so they're starting on the second this year, starting on the third.
Oh, because the.
Well, leap year is always in the.
Because that's fourth of September that they are. Which.
The day before is always.
That is not why it's different.
Right.
You come back to school.
Kids have never started before.
I mean, the only issue I can see, I mean, not an issue, but the only thing I can say for that is in September nineteen, there's no school on the second, but we didn't start until after that. In twenty, we have two days off right after we start school. Just Friday before Labor Day and everything. See if that would push us forward to that. It's just the way that, like they call it.
I'm pretty sure contractually it's the day's contract, but.
Friday before.
I believe you're right. I believe you're right.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm going to approve the National Public Schools twenty twenty-one calendar as presented.
Motion by Nicole, I have a second.
Second.
Chris to approve the National Public Schools calendar update from two thousand and five, two thousand and four. Any further discussion?
And so when the Board of Selectmen moved the voting back to Quasna, it was my understanding that the town manager had committed to work with the school to enable us to be able to hold school.
So we are holding the school on their governor election, but the presidential election tends to be a high turnout. It just is, there's a lot that goes on in this country. They act that if you don't have the school, then the presidential election.
So subsequently, the town manager asked that there not be school?
Subsequently, this during the whole, and the three days were being looked at, which was October one of this year, March third, May, you know, two, but that following, we put in there, like, that's what we were, you know, all the things in place, but we would have the school for it. So that's a, but the presidential election.
Even with the, that's the, that is going to be built. Okay, all right.
It's not just the in and out of the building, it's the whole parking lot, all cars.
Right, all right. I'm good.
All right, how do you vote on?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So the next item on the agenda, we have three different policies, all that were part of what I thought we were going to discuss. And concern the change that we had to make to support action about public comment. So I will turn it over to the public subcommittee to complete their discussion. Are we ready to have a recommendation from the board?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think everything that you see is, I mean, what I mentioned was reflected here. So we, B E D H is the updated policy. And so everything that struck out in yellow is basically added on your second page. The new wording is added, numbers one through nine. One change to number nine is in the recommend, in the final sentence, that we strike the word generally. Because we thought that conflicted with the same statement in number one as written. And then the next relevant policy is B E D H E. And so this was a, an additional policy in the manual that we thought was essentially redundant now that all these items are covered in the higher order policy. And then finally, the last relevant one is B E D, where again, you know, deletions were made to be consistent with the other policy. So we're recommending these changes with just that one word revision. Done?
No, I think B E D H dash E can be combined with the E D page though, so that there is no need for that to be a separate policy. I have basically.
Right, we're recommending that it be removed. Because this content is in.
Well, the, the content that's not highlighted stays.
No, it's in this.
Has it been combined?
Yes.
Okay. So, so, I'm sorry. So then it would be removed.
Right.
So B E D H dash E as a policy would be deleted from our policy manual.
And it was one, eventually he brought that policy to me. And he was like, well, I know what you're going to do, but what about this one? So thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Good question about the process. Was this done in coordination with legal counsel or the government? So all these breakouts, whether it's the policy.
No.
As long as I make sure at the moment of vote, I'll.
No, that's a good question. I'll bring up the same thing.
I mentioned it earlier on the agenda when we did the subcommittee updates, but we, it started with Sarah making recommendations, us commenting on those recommendations, adding additional questions, her coming back to us with responses to those questions, and then subsequent edits to the policy. So we feel like it's been thoroughly vetted with legal counsel. And let, you know, we erred on the side of a little redundancy to add clarity in certain places rather than streamlining it too much. It's funny, I, it's funny, I did call him today. I did call him today.
Did you? Really? Great.
But.
Now, glad to see that we kept the, we made sure that the policy itself. It's not called public speed, which I didn't understand. And I just, I didn't want to make something that I, I thought, you know, maybe I said to you, you know, had to do this, but there's no issue with us. The policy states things that citizens of the district are invited to attend. As opposed, I mean, we, we are able to state that and basically implying that citizens that aren't of Mashpee are not allowed to, are not invited to attend.
Where do you see that?
Uh, B E D. School committee meetings, except for executive servants are open to the public. Citizens of the district are invited to attend meetings at the school.
Sorry.
A B E D, uh, fourth paragraph, second sentence.
So in, that could have been, I mean, we edited the first policy to say members of the Mashpee Public School community. And so I think that should be consistent. Oh, citizens of the district, yeah. I think we purposely struck out citizens from the E D H members of the Mashpee Public Schools. So I think that should be also members.
Yeah.
Members of the district community. Just to make it the same, yeah. Thanks for touching that.
That's nothing. Policy's crazy. I mean, with all the, you know, with all the need to ensure that this is actually legally, that's where it gets difficult. Because we know what our intentions are. We're very open, we're very transparent, and we don't have any issue with people coming and talking. But this will not prevent us from maintaining decorum and maintaining our timeline. Any more discussion? This was a recommendation from the, the, the policy subcommittees we already had on the conversation. Does anybody else have any issues with this? There's two ways we can go about this right now. And there has been a lot of confusion about first, second, and third read. And so just to clarify, there has been some changes in the policy manual. We no longer have in the policy that we have to combine, that we cannot combine second or third read. But it does state that the, our policy states that we do follow a sequence of events. Except the policy, the first game introduction to the agenda, I'm sorry, introduction of the second in the agenda. The second is discussion, and the third is action. If you would like to continue to vote to approve this, uh, this first read, that we need to first vote to suspend that policy. Uh, I don't know if there's an emergency to do this. We, we're perfectly capable of hands to ad hoc if we get a public comment out there to make sure we're following the appropriate guidelines that have been handed down by the specific board of commissioners. So, I believe that you, you guys.
I don't know the history of that.
I'm not steering you either way. Again, we, we, I understand the, the new requirements for how we have to do public comment. I guarantee that we will actually follow those. And we've already made a review of the policy and very happy to thank you for the hard work.
So let's play that out, though. So the, the decision was in May. It's September, so we are incoming. And if we do enforce something that's not our official policy, then would that create an additional problem? So from our next meeting?
I mean, you know, this public comment, I've got the control, I'm the responsible chairman. So I would be the only person that would be able to get in trouble by not following the guidelines, but I understand. I don't have any issue with approving it. We've done this before, we've suspended the policy. So if that's what we can go forward, let's get it out of the way and do it. I mean, I'm very happy with the policy, I don't have any issue with it personally.
Yeah, I feel pretty confident with it too, I mean, given that Sarah's.
Given her. Okay, well, if I can entertain a motion to suspend the first read policy.
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Nicole, second by Don to suspend the first read requirement. Any discussion? Hearing none, Don, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. I get a motion to approve B E D H. I'm sorry, edits to B E D H, removal of B E D H dash E and edits to B E D.
So moved.
We need to do that?
Yes, because we have another motion.
Okay.
So your other motion, by the way, is to do that. Motion by Don, second by Nicole, to approve the edits to B E D H, remove B E D H dash E, approve the edits of B E D. Any further discussion?
Only just to say, let's make sure that we make those two changes, Kathy.
Any more discussion? Don, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, all right. All right, next item for new business is the M M H's practical flow, I think, to kind of update this.
Uh, so that's been a conversation and concern. I spoke to Kathy Lentz, and any changes are not what happened to twenty-two, twenty-three to the right? And we have a meeting. Dr. Henson.
The school year of twenty-two, twenty-three?
Well, we're on the calendar year, it's twenty-two, twenty-three. And so various topics related to making it a little bit more smooth there. You know, one, we can say that there are fewer parents on the road at that time because we have half arriving at the high school during that time compared to. But it continues to be the problem with people on the road, heading towards the high school. Onto one fifty-one. the high, onto one fifty-one, sometimes you're right behind that car and you'll get through. Today, I happen to be going through at eight eleven, so that's right in the timeframe, and the backup on one fif, um, Old Barnstable, heading to the high school lights was back to the entrance to the village, which is much further than I had ever seen it. And so, I think we need to have sort of collaboration with, maybe with the state, maybe with different transportation secretaries, to, the lanes are there, it seems like an easier fix that to make the right lane on Old Barnstable both ways be either straight or that you turn right, and that the only people that are in the other lane will be turning left, and they have a light that gives them a little time ahead of time on one fifty-one, as the lights. The DBW director has told me I have to have the timing adjusted, that didn't really seem to be anything that she could do, she said it sort of paces itself, and, and then we also, uh, are inquiring as to whether a sort of, I'm calling it, an exits, an, an extra exit, you know, sign, there's already sort of a dirt area, there's a gate, and it would be a buses only exit, right turn only, for buses, which would, at least at dismissal, help a little bit with that light. As it is, we do have personnel who stands out, and old dogs, so the buses have the priority that they do need to get through, but we've had a few buses, like bus four in particular, who has spent, you know, a few timings outright, and you leave a lot of... So anyway, we're going to be talking about it with the town manager tomorrow.
Hey, can you move forward with your, your discussion, uh, do you share with your family?
Yes, Shane, we were wondering about having drone skills above that intersection at that sort of eight oh five to eight twenty, you know, timeframe, and just to get sort of an idea. I also, I had, I think Gail was going to reach out to Barnstable County for a traffic study. I think we need to get some numbers there.
But that's not a county level, that's a state level, that's the problem.
In the state, maybe Tommy could hear.
No, I'm just saying that, you know...
Yeah, no, I know, that's always been the answer.
Yeah.
Well, some sort of video from above could go a long way to outreach and communicating...
We'll talk about that and get it.
You feel like an actual timestamp, kind of, I got a lot of, I got some skill breaks going on, and I don't know if we can discuss later, too, if you want, if we get that, maybe we can get a, a committee letter together that, uh, that's big relative, but I think that we should probably start from, we brought this up three years ago, and nothing happens since then.
Well, and I think if you don't have children in the system, you may not even know that that happens.
I mean, I know when we had the school committee meetings at the, the light, it was amazing how long it lasted, that, that was, it was almost like...
Some people score life.
Yes, that would very, very lose, I think, with this gap, it would kind of, the week, the town hall would go on, it would be, we think, out a foot out further back in that right, just leaving the high school, you can tell how many times that that's, in the right lane, they don't, oh, it's a right turn only, or they don't care?
No, no, that's a stretch.
And that's a stretch.
Because you, if there's no one else around you, and you have a guy turning, you're going to go like that.
Yeah, well, I've had people that, like, I'm at the, like, going straight, and somebody pulls up next to me in the right lane, and then almost cuts me off, because I want to go.
I would never do that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know, I'm looking at people that are better for the doubt, say they don't know, because if there's three or four cars sitting on top of the arrow, all up behind, you don't know which way to go.
But, but, but this isn't just affecting, you know, the school, this is affecting now also, um, people who are trying to get to work, who are, you know, and people trying to come out of, you know, on Old Barnstable Road, too. So, you know, I think, you know, that's one of the negative parts of changing the school's start time. Now we have all of this additional volume of traffic that's coming right through at eight o'clock.
That, that, this is a problem, regardless of what time...
Oh, but, no, I know, it's always been a problem, but it's, I think it's a bigger problem now.
It would be worse if we didn't have free busing, and half these kids now taking buses instead of being dropped off.
And it's really dangerous.
That's true.
The drivers have a lot of problems, you know, the drivers get really worried about that, yes, but, because cars are cutting them off, to get ahead of them, and buses are nervous about making the time, and...
More about, I'll work with the superintendent, we'll get something wrapped up, and we'll review approval, and go after it. With down, and also reach out to the county and whoever the P O P representative is, that we can try to find, at some time. At least try to get the conversation going, because twenty-two is... Julia? Did you see that?
That's where it is, state.
Excellent, thank you very much. Alright, next is just a real quick communications update, that I want to make sure that we're comfortable with what we've got set up. In the new, we had a discussion a couple meetings ago about personnel, personnel updates, any kind of, anybody's approach to a personnel issue in the district, that we, we as a committee, or whoever gets that update, gives that information, Patty, Patty will be the one that responds to the person, uh, issues, she will ensure that we, that we, if we have a non-personnel issue that's in the cognizance of budget, to be then evaluated in the policy, are three pillars for the school committee, and the chairman responds, and also make sure that everyone knows the response. I just don't want to have multiple people responding to different information, and everybody get called out, that, um, we're either, you know, not being transparent, we're not answering, we had something where, we had something earlier where I had answered a reading at time, and someone called back, called me out, and that was a fair enough call out, but as, as I told this individual, we all have regular jobs, the first week of school, and I decided that, um, so I will answer all of the stuff that comes from the committee, if I don't, or if you want, if it's something that's really within your real house, and you have a lot of information on, that's no problem, I just want to make sure that one person, one person, that's all I wanted to put.
Uh, just to clarify, though, if that's something, I don't know, like, maybe somebody writes out, you know, and you know that that's like Chris's passionate name, and you respond saying thank you, and whatever, nothing precludes Chris from also responding individually to that person?
Uh, no.
And, and then he would share for the, for the, as you would have you, just as an FYI, non-February, and make the rest of us aware.
I think by default, it should be one person answering. And that it, I, I, uh, okay, we can have more discussion about that, this is not new policy that I'm bringing, this is what we discussed during the new policy, new, new committee member handbook, um, so if we need to bring it up to, to reevaluate it, or...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, um, I guess when I, when we discussed that policy, I wasn't thinking that none of us would have the opportunity to respond if a member of the district community reached out to us on a topic that we were interested in. I think, I thought that we were saying, at minimum, someone should get the courtesy of knowing that their message was received and acknowledged by the committee, and that's what I thought the role of the chair was.
Right, and there's no concerns with having multiple people answer?
Not if we share our, I mean, because we're five members, you, you don't represent all of us, you re, you know, you're the chair of the committee, so your role, I think, is to acknowledge, you know, people who come to the committee with concerns, but I don't, I, I think we each are, have the ability to respond to that person. So, if, if we need to, I wasn't aware that I was delegating that to me when I look and compare, I still think I have the opportunity to...
I don't have any problem with it going up and down, so if you know, because they're responding at, maybe not.
But we're not, we're never responding at the committee.
No, we, yeah, we can't respond as a committee unless there's a vote.
Unless we're here, we're only the committee here, as I understand it. So when someone, even when they email us, they're basically writing to five different individuals who make up the board. So you, as the chair, I think it's your administrative responsibility to say, hey, we got it, thank you, and you may respond in some, and, and the rest of us may look at your response and go, great.
Fair enough.
You know, but if, if, if Don wants to then reach out to that parent and say, by the way, da-da-da-da, he can do that individually to that parent, as I understand it, and then as a courtesy, it would be nice if he let us know what he said.
Maybe.
You know, but, in the, in, but we cannot discuss it or respond in, outside of this meeting, because this is the only place we're aboard, that's my...
I think, personally, the only place that that's different is if the media is to contact us, then we would defer, generally defer to the chair to respond to the media.
Well, we can flush this out tomorrow, I think my, my biggest concern, again, I'm very concerned, if we have multiple people responding to one topic, to one person, that there is, that could be, uh, viol, and so, I have no issue with discussing this, pretty sure that we're all on the same sheet, I completely, a hundred percent understand the will of the entire committee, I don't have a, um, a dog in the sun, except to make sure that we're doing the right thing, answering the questions from the, the members of the, how do you put it, the Mashpee School, School Committee, um, and making sure we don't get ourselves in trouble.
Right.
Especially when you have maybe a disgrunt member of the committee writing us that are just waiting for us to do something else, um, so if they can, talk, you know, just to have, anyway, awesome.
I just have one thought.
Absolutely.
I, I think my, my feedback on that would be, I would even be okay with just, whoever wanted to respond, just send an email to everybody before they responded, say, hey, I'm going to respond, just so we can keep track of who's responding, and that way they stop coming, because I kind of have a forward, somebody will email you, and then you, and then email me, and they, they didn't talk that well.
Right.
And they're trying to catch people, and, uh, situations, it would be nice to know at least, oh, Nicole said she's going to reply that way, if I get an email, I can, I can say, well, I know, before reply, you know, and then maybe say, hey, send me a reply.
Could we get a little more fleshed out for this, too?
Yeah.
I, you know, again, I still, I still do preface my stuff with the fact that by knowing who's going to reply, we do know their response is going to get sent, we don't know if, if you were replying to something and we all knew that Chris was going to reply, he could be out talking to the superintendent, and could be out talking to, you know, the principal of Brian about something that this person wrote about before you respond, and then, but Nicole responds back with, you know, information, now purposely, that you have that, so, that's what I'm trying, there's a lot of little, if you want us here, I know we can't process every single situation that I've been in, but I'm just trying to...
The last one, if I take the really important, I'm trying to...
That's right, that's right, you weren't in the emails, so...
I started getting people plus.
Either way, I mean, we have somewhere to flush out, we can definitely talk about this more, and make sure that we're, we're comfortable with what we're doing, so, alright, cool, thank you very much for that input, you know, um, school committee draft goals, just wanted to put another plug up for that, I emailed, and basically when we were at the retreat, uh, we all kind of put some information down, I took notes, and I presented that information again to you guys at email forum. As we start moving forward, next, uh, next month, my, my expectation would be that we get our goals finalized in October, um, so please continue to feed me information, there's no deliberation here, it's just you feeding me information, and what I'm looking for is, we have our three major goals, if you have other goals you'd like to add, please provide them, and we need to start making our action steps for those goals, um, with the understanding, again, uh, that this is all at ten thousand feet, uh, and then we do want to make, we don't want to make goals or action steps that are so specific, excuse me, that they're going to affect the goals of the superintendent unnecessarily, or even those of the, of, of, should be much more higher than that. So, hopefully, we, uh, you provide you that, that input, I will present something, again, by email, a formal document that we can share, uh, amongst ourselves, and then we'll present that at the next meeting for discussion and approval for the, the, that's the only thing that I was, that I was... And then last one is, uh, upcoming events, October one, the special election, uh, October five, October fast, that's seven, Mashpee, Tom is going to win, I'm going to...
Be across from the library, and, um, consigliere, and so, she is hoping that people can just stop, you know, that's what...
She's going to put something out for, like, fast slot, or who's going to be at that, I'm not sure.
I can hope so.
Okay.
It's a fine, well, don't be tired of it. With everything on...
And that's not, that's not indigenous people's, uh, group, is it?
No.
Alright, stand by for that. Um, next item in the agenda is, uh, I didn't, I didn't know the advance, boy, heaven. And we have our second public comment today. So the next item is going to be executive session, so we have a motion to adjourn, uh, and then we'll go to executive, executive session, and we'll not return.
I moved to adjourn. I'm not returning.
Right.
For the purpose of...
We could adjourn for the purpose of executive session after.
Something else.
Make a motion that we go into, that we, um, that we adjourn from, uh, regular session and go into executive session for a purpose of bargaining with unit A, from which we will not return to public session.
Second.
Motion by Don, second by Chris. Have you booked on?
Yes.
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 No, I mean, it can be anonymous, you don't have to put your name.
We have a box in our office, we have a box, we have a box in town, so we're collecting...